There is.
Perfect. I think we've got everyone. Let's go back then, and we will then go ahead and call this July 28 Albany Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting to order. With that, staff, may we roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Donaldson. Commissioner McLeod.
Here.
Commissioner Moment.
Here.
Commissioner Pilch. I see Commissioner Pilch in the panelist, but he appears to be muted. Chair Wadi.
Here. Commissioner Pilch, are you able to unmute yourself? Maybe not. All right. Well, Commissioner, to those listening, and Commissioner Pilch appears to be here. Why don't we go ahead and move along on the agenda? And hopefully, between now and then, Commissioner Pilch, you can figure out how to unmute yourself here, or raise your hand if nothing else, we can hopefully at least then count your vote that way. Next up on our agenda is item three. Item three is ex parte communications. Do any commissioners have any ex parte communications to disclose this evening?
No.
All right, seeing none, we will move along. Item four is the consent calendar. We have one item, just the meeting minutes from July 14. The consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be acted on by one motion unless a member of the commission or a member of the public chooses to pull this item off of the consent calendar. So first up, we have item four dash one, meeting minutes from July 14. Would anyone from the commission like to pull this item from the consent calendar? Right, seeing none, why don't we go ahead and open it up for public comment? Members of the public, this is your opportunity to pull the minutes off of the consent calendar. Chris, are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item?
At the moment, I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Okay, with that, then we'll go ahead and close public comment on the consent calendar. And would somebody like to make a motion to move the minutes?
Certainly, I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second on that motion?
I was absent in the last meeting, so.
Oh, that's right. I think it was just the three of us.
I'm abstaining also, so.
That's right, you're out. That, that makes sense. It looks like Commissioner Pilch, are you yet able to participate? It looks like we're having a little bit of technical difficulty. I'll go ahead and second the motion. If nothing else, I think we only need two of the three of us who are there, I believe, to pass the motion of the minutes. So with that, why don't we call it Commissioner Donaldson?
I.
Ah, there we go. Commissioner Pilch.
Yes, sorry, I am here. I'm also on the phone and having troubles with my controls, but I will vote yes.
Great. I vote yes as well, and that is with Commissioner Moment and McLeod abstaining since they were absent from that hearing. So that item passes 302 abstention. That takes us on to item five on our agenda, announcements and communication. There is, there are no updates on that front. Takes us on to item six, which is general public comment. General public comment is for folks who wish to address the commission on an item that is not otherwise agendized tonight. Each speaker will have three minutes. Members of the public, this is now your time to go ahead and get in the queue if you'd like to speak in general public comment. Chris, do we have any speakers?
Is anyone who'd like to speak during public comment? Please use the raise your hand feature now. I'm not seeing anyone right now.
Okay, last call. Seeing no public commenters, we will go ahead and close general public comment, which takes them, takes us on to item seven, action items for this evening. We have one item, item seven dash one. This is planning application 21 dash 047, design review for a two-level addition at 622 Curtis. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Chair, before you begin, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I have to be recused from this item to the proximity to my house. And so I think my video is still off, and I will leave it off.
Okay, thank you. So Commissioner Pilch is recused. Go ahead, staff, with your presentation.
Great. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Once again, this is planning application 21047, design review for a two-level addition at 622 Curtis Street. Some background on the property. The subject property is a 4,000 square foot lot with a two-bedroom, one bathroom, 1,323 square foot house built in 1925. Notably, an addition of 221 square feet for a studio attached to the garage was done in 1949. Otherwise, the city records show minor work done to the property in years past. Here's the street view of the subject property as it sits today. And project requests, the applicant is seeking design review approval for a 550 square foot two-level addition at the rear of the home. On the ground level, the applicant is proposing one bedroom, a laundry room, and the proposed interior staircase for the second level of the home. And on the proposed second story of the addition, a master suite with private balcony is proposed. Is an existing rear elevation of the home today. And here's what's proposed with the two-level addition at the rear. And then also just a 3D rendering of the street front view of the property. Exceptional design projects which exceed 8.45 F A R subject to exceptional design as reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Exceptional design treatments include horizontal wood siding, a hip roof with asphalt shingles, single hung vinyl windows throughout the addition, and an upper store, story balcony which faces the rear yard. And here's a 3D rendering of the home at the rear. You can see the balcony off the master suite on the top floor, and the exterior materials proposed. Parking, two off-street parking spaces are provided in the existing garage and driveway. No additional parking requirements were triggered under this project scope. And here's just a site view, a proposed site plan illustrating the existing garage here, and then the driveway with approximately 11 foot width clearance. Staff has not received any correspondences in regard to this project proposal. And the project is categorically exempt from secret review pursuant to section 15303. And recommendation, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission review and approve the proposed project subject to the findings and conditions of approval. With that, I will stop my screen share, and staff is happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item? All right. Seeing none, then, why don't we go ahead and turn it over to the project applicant if they have a presentation?
See, I'm not seeing the applicant in the in the attendees group, but I see the property owner. Alfredo, if you want to speak on this item, you can. If not, you can just tell us that you don't want to.
Uh, no, we don't have anything to say on that. Thank you.
Okay, then with that, why don't we go ahead and open up public comment before we turn it back to the commission deliberations? Members of the public, now is your opportunity to speak on this item. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand to get in the queue now. Chris, are there any speakers?
There are no hands raised at the moment.
Okay, with that, then we'll go ahead and close public comment and turn the conversation back to the commission. Would any of my fellow commissioners like to kick things off? Sure, Commissioner Donaldson.
Sure, I guess I could start. I really don't have any problems with this project. I, I thought the, the roof line of the addition and the addition at the very back of the house looked a little bit awkward when I saw the renderings and when I saw the plans. But when I did my site visit, I actually think the, the roof line of the proposed addition will integrate quite well into the home when seen from the street. And I really don't have any problems with it. No question, no, no. No questions or comments really, or no objections certainly to the design or to the project.
Well, and I'm, I'm happy to jump in as well. I'm supportive of the project, actually, in sort of keeping with the spirit of the next item we have on the agenda tonight. I would actually have been supportive of this item being on the consent calendar. The only thing that jumped out to me is the fact that the proposed addition is including the use of vinyl windows. But again, in looking at it, none of the windows are really visible from the street. So in that sense, I'm supportive of, of the use of a sort of more economically sort of a cheaper window choice at the back since they aren't visible from the, the street. I would just note that any, any replacement windows that are closer to the street, I think, should still retain the character, existing character of the building, but that's not part of the proposal. And I very much appreciate the fact that this is a way to upgrade and sort of bring another life to one of our craftsman style homes and sort of maintaining that character from the street, which I think is great. It kind of brings another life to this home. And so I very much appreciate sort of the, effectively, the adaptive reuse and modernization of this building as well. All of my comments, but I'm supportive of the project as proposed. If no other comments, we can also, oh, Commissioner McLeod.
I just agree with everything that's been said. I don't have any objections to the project, I think. In the backyard, it looks nice. Side yard, it's difficult to see much on either side. So, and from the front, almost impossible to see the additions. So it has minimal impact. So I'm happy to support the project.
Great.
All right. I'd be prepared to move.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I will move approval of the planning application 21047, design review for a two-level rear addition at 622 Curtis Street.
Great. Do we have a second? Great. Thank you, Commissioner Moment. And then on that vote, Commissioner McLeod.
Yes.
Commissioner Moment.
Yes.
Commissioner Donaldson.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So that vote passes four to zero with Commissioner Pilch being recused. And just a reminder to the property owners to leave the story pulls up for the duration of the appeal period. And that moves us on to item eight on our agenda. Moving through quickly here, I think Commissioner Pilch is back joining us. Item eight is new business. Item eight dash one is a discussion of planning commission rules and parliamentary practice and operation. Staff?
Yeah. So before you tonight is really just a check-in for the full commission to discuss kind of the, the general meeting management. We did this about five years ago, as the meeting lengths at that particular point in time, I'm sorry, six years ago, were rather lengthy, given all the substantive long-range planning and some current planning applications that we're dealing with in, in the present. I thought it appropriate to come back to the commission to revisit this issue of meeting management. Because with some of the information we've given you in your packet, you know, the meetings are getting longer. And so I thought it would be appropriate to just kind of check in and see how best to manage the commission's time going forward. So it's really, it's, it's your meeting, it's how you want to manage it. But I think it's helpful to have these conversations periodically, just to, you know, kind of reestablish or establish new parameters, if you think that's appropriate. And just as a side note, when we did this in 2015, it turned out to be really quite helpful and kind of reducing the overall length of, of the meetings with just general consensus of how best to manage the commission meetings.
Great, thank you. Staff, well, on that matter, I assume we should eventually take public comment, but why don't we go ahead and open it up for commissioner conversation first, and then we'll, we'll wrap with public comment on this one. Do any commissioners have thoughts on, on the staff report or topic at hand here? Commissioner Moment?
Yeah, I, I am looking at this topic in two, you know, in two parts. One is review of individual development applications. And two is study sessions for long-range planning efforts. And so in regard to design review for individual planning applications, I am totally open for, you know, keeping a time limit for commissioners' comments. And also, if someone has to, some commissioner has to pull off the project from consent calendar, I would propose limiting the discussion only to a topic that is a reason for pulling the project of the consent calendar. But in regard to long-range planning projects, I think in that, in those sessions, it is not just the discussion, decisions, but the discussions also, I think, expected on design issues and commissioners, I think, would need, you know, some time, some opportunities to comment. And, you know, what I have observed in last couple of meetings, the presentations that are presented by the consultants, not all of them are provided to the commissioners in advance. And so many times, we see them for the first time, and so there would always be some questions. And then there is not enough time to articulate comments on the presentations that are presented only during the meeting. And so if the presentations are provided in advance, that would help articulate some comments. And also, it would give us opportunity to send the questions in advance. And then in terms of speaking time, I think if the questions are given in advance, that's fine. If not, if the presentation is presented without giving an advance copy, then there could be a two-minute maximum time limit for commissioners to question. And then for the comments, there could be five-minute time limit. And then there could be an additional three minutes time limit for follow-up comments. And so that would be like 10 minutes per commissioner for the study sessions. And so that would be like 15 minutes altogether, and maybe 13 minutes presentation. And so it looks like, you know, it might be possible to limit our study sessions within two hours. And I would also suggest that, considering bulk of planning applications and lots of topics that we are looking at in terms of long-range planning efforts, efforts should be made that the study sessions are separate sessions, not combined with individual planning applications. That's all I have to say.
Yeah. Would any other commissioners like to jump in? Sure, Commissioner Donaldson. Oh, no, go ahead.
Yeah. Okay, I think those are, those are interesting comments. I'm, I'm of several minds in approaching this, I have to say. I'm not particularly in favor of over-managing our time of trying to necessarily cut people off. I've been on the, I've been on the speaker's side of the podium before, and I think that three minutes is, is, is a short amount of time. In some cases, it's very hard to to get your thoughts together and, and make any, say anything significant in three minutes. I've run into that problem before as a speaker at city council or other meetings, other meetings. I'm really not in favor of limiting, of having time limits on what commissioners can say. Perhaps I'm one of those violators that take up too much time sometimes. But I, I think we should have the, have the chance, the opportunity to say what we want to say. So I'm, I'm not particularly in favor of that. I like the idea of, of having as much information in advance as we can have. And that, I think that will help to shorten meetings. I've been very frustrated with some of the public members we've had in the past, over the past year that have come in and made comments on every consent color item, or made the same comment over and over again in, in then that their comments that aren't within the bailiwick of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that is really a frustrating waste of my time. And I think that does a great disservice to those members of the public who do have business before the commission. So I, my generally, I, I think that we're doing okay now in the way we do the time management, and I'm not in favor of any real big changes there. So let's see, I think we do a pretty good job on the consent calendar. And I think it's okay that if commissioners have questions or concerns about something on the consent calendar, that they, they can pull it off for further discussion. And some of those discussions, in my experience, have been valuable. So I don't know, I'm generally in favor of, of doing the best we can to manage the time, but I don't see a big problem. It, it's interesting, the, the work that you did, Anne, and, and laying out all of the meetings. It looks like most of our meeting, our average meeting time is, has been around a little over two hours, a little bit higher last year than this year, if I remember correctly. We have had a couple of four-hour meetings, and that, that I admit is grueling. Those are too, those are too long. It's just really hard for me anyway to, to, to plow through all those and be alert at the, at the end, for sure. But that's, that's rare. And, and I guess I would say that, you know, we're here to represent the city. And, and, and in many cases, the, the people that come before us, this is the biggest item they have in far, in, in terms of their interactions with the city of Albany. And so I'm, I'm in favor of erring on the side of letting the public speak and letting the public feel as if they've been heard. And letting the commissioner speak so that it looks like, and so that we have, not looks like, but so we do have an ample discussion of, of the merits and demerits of the projects that come before us. So, so anyway, my general feeling is I'm, I'm really not in favor. I don't think we need to do too much more than we're doing now to constrain the time available and to try to speed up the meetings. I, I don't think that should be our objective. I think our objective should be good, good meetings, quality meetings that, that, that the attendees can, will leave feeling that they've been heard and, and that, and that we've done our, we're doing our job in a competent manner. And if that takes more time, that's, that, that's okay with me. Anyway, those are my thoughts.
Commissioner McLeod.
You know, I would say I agree pretty much completely with Commissioner Donaldson. I think we've been doing a pretty good job, and I think staff has actually done a good job at not overloading the agenda. And though some of the long meetings have been kind of unavoidable, when we've either had cancellations in previous meetings and things have just stacked up. And some of the policy questions deserve more time, absolutely. And I would feel very much against limiting my time to speak on any policy issue. And I would also be very much against limiting my time on some of the bigger projects, such as the Albany Bowl project or something like that, where there are just a lot more issues on the table, and a lot more things for discussion. And I think the public deserves to hear our thoughts and how we process our thinking regarding decisions and what our justifications are for our decisions. And that may very well take more than, you know, three, five minutes. You know, I mean, there is a distinction between the policy subjects and the individual planning projects. And I think on the individual planning projects, we're doing pretty well. We're moving through them pretty quickly. I think we've aired on the side of hearing items on this consent calendar that have had public letters submitted during COVID, because, you know, we're not sure everybody's able to participate. So if there's a letter or something, and we kind of take it as, you know, meaning that we should discuss it, at least to address those concerns that were brought up in the letters. I think that's fair enough. You know, we could all probably edit our comments a little more. I could try, we could all try editing our own comments a little more, but at the same time, I wouldn't want to have to be limited to a certain timeframe. I think overall, I don't feel overburdened by the length of the meetings. There are some that go on long. But they are important issues and worth full discussion on our part. So I'm generally happy with the format. I don't really think we need to change anything. And I think next year, once we get through the housing element and through the San Pablo specific plan, I think things may ease up a little bit. And it's also, I, I also agree with the comments about providing consultants' presentations sooner to us. I think that would help formulate our questions and our thinking, and maybe be a little more concise in our comments. I, you know, some public commenters have suggested that, and I think that would help public comment respond to it better, more quickly. So in general, I'm fine with the way things are. So that's about all I have to say at the moment. Thank you.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to jump in and share a couple comments as well. So I would agree with several of the things other commissioners have said. I like the idea of as, as much as possible, separating the larger projects or the larger policy items out onto their own standalone agenda. I think if nothing else, to me, it's a shifting of brain, sort of brain power when, when there are those larger projects versus more of a design review. I think it's easier to churn through a higher volume of design review items when you know you don't have sort of immediate item at the end. So to be supportive of that, I know sometimes that's not feasible. You guys do a great job of getting development applications to the commission in a really expeditious manner. And so I know that's part of the goal. Um, in terms of on the development project, sort of design review side of things, in terms of the items on the consent calendar, I would certainly be very supportive of us all collectively trying to do our best to flag any issues that we have with items placed on the consent calendar in advance and sharing that with, with staff, so that we know going into the hearing, if items are going to be pulled off the consent calendar, I'm certainly, you know, willing to, to commit and would encourage other commissioners that we only pull items off if we actually have an issue with the project. If, if we have, you know, want a modification to the outcome of the project, or are not going to be able to, to vote in support of it, I think that, that's sort of an appropriate time to pull it off. But I agree that a lot of, I've had questions before, certainly other times where I've had concerns about a certain material choice, and expressed that with staff a few days in advance, and it's resolved, and it's been able to stay on the consent calendar. And so I think that, that certainly is a good approach. I would agree that if we can keep things on consent, you guys have obviously dug into those projects the most. And if we can keep them on consent, that's great. Obviously, there may be times where we just disagree. And I think that's certainly an appropriate moment in time. But it would be great going into it, especially, especially for me to help provide some structure in terms of how the hearing is going to move along. And, you know, are we expecting to have a presentation? Is the applicant aware? And are they prepared to give a presentation or kind of make their case? I think we've caught a couple applicants a little flat-footed when an item's been pulled off the consent calendar, where they're not prepared to kind of make their case of, I chose this material for the following reason, or I chose this design or this, this reason. And so I think if we're going to be pulling it off the consent calendar, it kind of, it, it, it's, I think, would be kind for the applicant to give them a bit of a heads up that it's coming off so that they can prepare a proper application. And we can kind of hold a more traditional hearing with either a brief staff presentation, or if nothing else, an applicant presentation for them. So I, I'm certainly willing to commit to that. I would encourage other commissioners to, to try to flag those things first. I think that's sort of a nibbling around the edge, not, not a major change, but I think something we can all commit to. And I'm certainly happy to also commit to, you know, I don't think we all need to regurgitate all of the things we love about a project. If everyone's in consensus of liking a project and thinking it's good, I think we can all do a good job on editing our comments and just saying, I agree with everything Commissioner Donaldson said, and move along. So yeah, so those are my thoughts sort of on the development project side. On the larger projects, I would agree. I don't want to commit myself to only having five minutes to speak, or, you know, only speaking once. I do think it, it would be helpful to have the presentations in advance, but I also understand that sometimes there is sort of verbal commentary that goes with these presentations, and they sometimes are getting edited down a little bit at the 11th hour. But it kind of cuts both ways. If we have more information upfront, I think we can probably provide more, ask more questions in advance and be more succinct. If we don't have that in advance, I think that tends to lead to more questions and commentary. And I would agree, I think some of the bigger ones are the ones where it warrants us being a little exhausted and having longer hearings, because those are bigger topics. But I also think, I, I've really appreciated the fact that you guys have, have started breaking up those bigger topics or bigger policy issues into sort of some bite-sized presentations. And I certainly would be supportive of having a few extra hearings with more focused, targeted conversations that we can maybe handle in an hour versus, you know, a two or three-hour-long hearing on one item would be supportive of that. I think that was the bulk of the questions, but I do think, to me, the primary focus is kind of around the development-reviewed consent calendar, and just trying to do a better job of flagging in advance if we've got problems with those projects. And if we don't have problems with it, let's not pull them off the consent calendar. But trying to flag those in advance. So that's my, my thought on the matter. Did any other commissioners want to share their two cents?
Is it Commissioner Pilch?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, Commissioner Pilch, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, and no worries, it's probably maybe difficult to see me since I am having internet issues and it looks like I'm not even able to turn my video on, so thanks for bearing with me. So, thanks. So I think the, the chair actually has been doing a good job in trying to manage our time, so thank you, Chair. And I think the chair did, that is part of the chair's role. And so I, I welcome the chair to butt in. For me, at least, anytime it seems like I might be rambling or going on longer than is necessary or repeating points who don't need to be repeated, that sort of thing. I won't be offended. I do try to compress my comments and only speak when I think it's needed and to try to remember that even though I might have opinions, like, you know, how great this project is, as the chair mentioned, I could keep that to myself because it's not that important for, for passing the item. In, in terms of the public speaking, we can't really, we don't have a lot of control over the public speaking. Every member of the public does have a right to speak on items on the agenda. Anything longer than three minutes, I've never seen, other than for an applicant. So three minutes is, is definitely a maximum. And at council and other meetings, sometimes they limit public comments to two minutes or one minute, depending on the number of public speakers and the number of items on the agenda. And I think that's fine, and that's just part of public, that's just part of speaking at public meetings. So all public meetings are, are like that, as far as I can tell. I also agree, we've not been too, doing too bad, but I'm happy to talk about improvements. But I also, I don't want to, I think we should, we should take as long as we need to, to do the public's business. And, you know, if it takes longer on a particular meeting, well, and, but, but, but it's good, it's a good meeting. We're being productive, we're doing the public's business, then we just need to remember that some nights might go long. And we are having some very meaty items that might require some big zoning changes that might, that a lot of people might have a lot of things to say about. So, you know, I, I can, I can see us having longer meetings on some of those, you know, if, if they're productive, which I think they have been. However, again, it's certainly good to try to be as efficient as possible. So here's some, a few notes of mine. I try to take notes during the meeting so that when I have points to rattle off, I, I have them in front of me. I can rattle up them as quickly as possible. I think asking staff clarifying questions ahead of time, to the extent possible, is also good because then you can just get those clarifying questions answered offline, and we don't have to do that during the meeting. I think I mostly agree with Commissioner Momens and the chair's points on, on all of this. Yes, for the presence, presentations in advance, absolutely. And that's, that's a little bit of a pet peeve of mine, and I think it would help everyone if, you know, the sooner we have the, the presentations on the agenda. I think limiting commissioner, commissioners' time could be problematic, I agree. But what I've seen done in other meetings is that commissioners get a timer so that they see exactly how much time they're talking. And that might be something we can consider, so, you know, and then the chair can can feel free to jump in and say, well, you know, that we, as a commission, we decided we'd only talk five minutes on these sort of items. I see Commissioner Pilch, you're already at seven minutes, you think you could wrap it up? So I would be okay with something like that. Limiting discussions to topics that we care about for consent item, alum, consent agenda items as we pull them is good. And finally, and finally, that's it, I think. So those are my, my comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Donaldson or staff, did you have an item or a question?
Well, allow, Commissioner Donaldson can go first. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things.
All right, so now, what was I going to say? I've lost my train of thought. Let's see, no, I, I really have lost it. I'll have to come back. Sorry.
I just wanted to note a couple logistical things because as, as everyone is well aware, we are dealing with a lot of substantive topics these days. And so, you know, where staff anticipates that, that we're going to have a lengthy meeting or, you know, particularly hot topic, I, I really am doing my best to make sure that we, we have very focused meetings. So for example, next Wednesday, we'll just have the one-item agenda and, and expect that that will have a lot of discussion, both with the commission and with members of the public. And going forward on our long-range efforts, I think with the specific plan, when we pick it up again in September, we'd like to start those meetings early, where we go, where we go back to that five-to-seven window of time. So it's focused and it's distinctly separate from the rest of the regular agenda items, and then we can have our regular meeting at seven, where we go back to development applications, consent calendar meeting minutes, et cetera. But that's, that's one way in which we're trying to balance out the commission's agenda load and, and attention and, and really just your, your energy overall. Similarly, with the housing element, we do anticipate having a singularly focused meeting just to deal with that. And of course, Mary Miller will be the, you know, doing the, the live work and presentation in that meeting. But we're, we're going to kind of hold to that. So we appreciate your, you know, willingness to, to schedule extra meetings where we need to, just so we have really focused discussion. On the issue of the presentations being available advance, in advance, I wanted to just touch on that, kind of two points. When we prepare those, they're intended to be a visual aid to kind of summarize, kind of and so, you know, the content of what you get in those presentations is coming directly from the report. It's just, you know, it's just put in a slide deck as opposed to, you know, the more extensive document. That being said, you know, Commissioner Waddy hit the nail on the head. Sometimes we're doing those presentations down to the 11th hour. So if this is something that the commission wants, this is not something that is going to go out with the packet five days ahead of schedule. We have to make adjustments based on questions that come up, whether it be from the commission or members of the public, making sure that we have that clarifying information in there. And as you all know, we always include a slide that reflects whatever volume of correspondence and concerns are highlighted. We think that that's extremely important to have in the presentation. So if it's the commission's desire to get those presentations in advance, we can accommodate that with the caveat that it's not going to go out with the full packet. It will go out much closer to the meeting.
And I'll just follow up. I think on that topic, so lo, from my perspective at least, so long as the staff report is covering the same substance in terms of, you know, the, the issues that we are discussing this evening, right? It's a project, we're focusing on, you know, X, Y, and Z topics. I'm fine relying on the staff report versus the presentation that kind of augments that. I think if there is an instance where it's just an informational presentation and we don't have a robust staff report, obviously, that's different because we're coming at it a little more blind. But I think that, that to me is sort of the crux of the issue. If we've got a staff report that's giving us effectively the same issue and the, the presentation isn't going to be dramatically different or presenting dramatically different, you know, statistics or other supplementary studies that we don't have access to, but is more just, here's an update of what's happened over the last five days based on some questions and commentary. I think that's absolutely appropriate to get that a little more on the fly. So those aren't as, as much things that are necessarily generating additional questions for me. So that's really my thoughts on that. But thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Donaldson, did your thought come back to you?
It, it did. And in fact, my thought was, I had two, there are two, actually. One, one, one was very much along the same line. I, I did want to ask staff, ask Anne really about those presentations. And I, I know from experience, they're probably pulled together the last day, you know, they've wrapped up the last day. And, and I, I wouldn't expect them to be sent out with the packet or, or anything like that. And I, and I think the point is well-taken that if you read the staff report, there shouldn't be any surprises in those presentations by the staff or the consultants. And except for new information that's come in, in, since the staff report went out, and that, that would be what they're for. So, but if you did get those slideshows up the morning of the commission or the night before the commission meetings, I, I think that would be good, and I, I would, I would make time, if I could possibly do so, to look at them in advance. And it, it might help my thought process. The other comment I wanted to make is that I'm willing to commit, as a commissioner, to letting staff know in advance if there's an item on the consent calendar that I want to pull and why. And I, I think that's what we're talking about that tonight. And I think it would be good for, you know, all the commissioners to sort of agree to do that and ma, make that commitment, if at all possible, to alert the staff that it's going on and, and that you want to do that and kind of why. And certainly, so the staff can talk to the chair, and the chair can know what to expect. I think those are, are, is a good comment. And so that we don't have any surprises about, like Christopher suddenly having to do a staff report on an item that was on consent and that he hasn't even really rehearsed or looked at, you know, for a few days or something like that. I don't think that's fair. And so I think, I think it's a, would be, would be useful to alert the staff in advance if you're, see something in consent calendar that you're quite, you have concerns about and want to pull.
Thanks, Commissioner Donaldson. Commissioner Pilch, I see you're having your hand up also.
Yeah, thank you. Let me see, okay, I am unmuted. Yeah, I, I think the, if it helps staff and the commissioners to say in advance to staff that we're going, that I intend to pull a consent item, I'd be glad to do that and, and, you know, commit to making sure that, you know, that I attempt to do that. I think that's a de, very decent idea. And I would be okay with presentations not going out with the packet if they are being, you know, if they're more last-minute or if they're, you know, if there, there's more data to be gathered before they're presented. But I do think that even, even any presentation, even if it's one minute before the meeting, should be posted on the, on the agenda for everyone to see its matter for the public of more easily following along. Sometimes even if the content of a presentation is duplicative of other content, staff is referring to the presentation, so then the commissioners, makes sense for the commissioners to refer back maybe to a certain page of the presentation. And that can be more easily done if I actually have the presentation in front of me as well. So, and I think it's just a, for a matter of, maybe even for the Brown Act, that, you know, we want to make sure that all, all content, all content presented to commissioners is available to the public as well in a timely manner. That's it for now. Thanks.
Thank you. If there are no other comments right now, we should take public comment. So why don't we go ahead and call public comment right now? If there are any members of the public who wish to comment on this new business item, now is your time. Please go ahead and raise your hand and get in the queue. Chris, do we have any members of the public who raised their hands?
No, no, we don't.
Okay, then with that, public comment is closed. Final thoughts? Otherwise, we can move forward. Oh, Commissioner Donaldson, sure.
Do you have one final thought? When we get back to live meetings, I, I remember we've, there's references in the staff report to the work we did in 2015, 16 about the speaker cards and all that. And I want to verify that we'll continue those practices with the speaker cards and all, when we get back in, in live meetings. So I think that's worked quite well. And the other advantage is you, staff gets to name and proper spelling of people's names for the minutes. And I, I think it's a good practice.
Great. Commissioner Pilch, is that your hand again? I wasn't sure if it was still up or one more time.
Yeah, no, that is my hand again. And, yeah, I just wanted to ask, it sounds like we've all got our thoughts out there. Is it staff's intention to come back? And it sounds like we have consensus or mostly consensus on some items and maybe not on others. So what's the intention from the staff and or chair about what we do with this going forward? Do we bring it back in the next commission meeting and say, this is what I think we've agreed on, or something else?
I mean, I'm, I'm happy to jump in. And what I heard this evening was not necessarily something we need to pass a resolution on or anything, but more of, I think, a more casual commitment to be a little more reflective on the, especially on the consent calendar, to, to flag issues in advance for staff. If we want to pull those items off so that both staff and the project applicant can be prepared. So I think that can just be a verbal commitment that we're all making to ourselves, being on the commission here, but not something we need to pass. And then I think the other items, I think we're just good feedback for staff about, you know, if that possible, posting presentations at some moment in time before the hearing, even if it's 10 minutes before the hearing. And to try to keep those big items on their own dedicated agendas where as possible. And it sounds like that is the, the game plan from staff. So I, I don't think we necessarily need next steps. So I don't know if that is a good high-level synopsis of, of what everyone said, but that was sort of the, the takeaway that I, I took.
Yeah, I, I think that was perfectly stated. And when we did this in 2015, we did not have the commission adopt a resolution or take any formal action. It was just simply a check-in to kind of, you know, visit best practices in meeting management. But, but it's certainly not anything that has to be formalized through a motion.
Great.
Yeah, but I think, and I agree with that. And, but I think that if we find that we do want to introduce something like time limits or a timer or something, or we just want to have guidelines for ourselves that are written down so we can remember them and refer to them, I think that's okay to, too. And so if a commissioner or chair wants to bring that back for, in another meeting, I would be amenable to that as well.
Sounds great. With that, why don't we go ahead and wrap item eight on the agenda then, and we'll move on. Item nine, just an update on next, the next meeting, which is August 4th. This is one we're taking, I believe, out of order to handle one of these larger items, which is August 4th. Same time, same place. Commissioners Donaldson, did you have a question on that?
Based on my personal plans, I'm going to be missing the next three meetings. So just want to let you know that. It's possible I'll be able to change plans for the September 8th meeting, but unlikely at this time. And I will be out of town for the two August meetings, so.
Okay.
I'm sorry to miss them.
We'll miss you, Commissioner Donaldson. Thank you on that. And with that, our meeting is adjourned tonight. Thank you, everyone. Good evening.
Hey, thank you.
Good night, a short meeting.